Hello and welcome to Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development Tourism. 1:01 PM decision-making agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing, due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19, 2024 in this room. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. So we're ready for decision-making on our 1:01 PM regarding HB 2359 relating to Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office. Recommendation is the passage in ESTI I on Page 6, Section 3, Removing Wireless Community Networks from the List of Eligible Projects, and defecting the date to January 1st, 2060. Committee members, any discussion?
Page 6, what portion?
Okay, so on Page 6, Section 3, Removing Line 6 Wireless Community Networks, and then defecting the date to January 1st, 2060.
Where is it on Page 6?
Section 3.
Section 3.
Section 3.
Yeah.
Just that wireless.
Yeah, just that.
Oh, I thought that was what the advocates from, who is that? Wireless Cores Conference were advocating.
Yeah, and then, so to the other issue we're dealing with is the biting of the cost on it. So we're gonna, I'm gonna remove the wireless community networks on it.
Okay, I'm gonna be there.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just, you know, recognizing the concerns is, I mean, of course, we open up broadband, but would that, I mean, consistent in recognizing the value of the, I guess, the wire, I mean, it's the same thing again, the wireless cooperation, what this is, so that's, they get out the.
The wireless community network.
Okay. And that's for the, because we're taking in the infrastructure.
Just that portion of it, the wireless community network.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Reservations.
Senator Kim is excused, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned. Next up, we are gonna do our IT, we're ready.
Okay, going live. Two, one.
Hello, welcome to Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development Tourism, the 1:01 PM agenda. Meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing, due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19, in this room. 2 to 9, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. We will have a two-minute time limit per testifier. And let's get started with HB 1828, HDI, relating to Energy Efficiency Portfolio Standards. First up, Michelangelo with DCC.
Hi, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer. We stand in our strong support of House Bill 1828, an important energy efficiency portfolio measure. Happy to answer any questions to my head.
Thank you. Next up, testifying on behalf of Hawaii State Energy Caucus.
Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer, we stand in our strong support of House Bill 1828, an important energy efficiency portfolio measure. Happy to answer any questions to my head.
Thank you. Next up, Gwen Yamamorolau with Green Infrastructure Authority.
Good afternoon, we stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Next up, Leo Asunchen, testifying on behalf of PUC with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, I'm Ashley Norman, Utility Analyst with the Commission. I'm here on behalf of Chair Asunchen, available to answer any questions. We stand on our written testimony and mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Christina Kazer, Energy Coordinator, testifying on behalf of County of Hawaii Office of Economic Development in support, Matthew Gonzer, on behalf of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency in support, Michael Munikata, Ulupono Initiative.
Chair, Vice Chair members, school tunnel science testimony support.
Thank you. Next up, Jody Robinson with Blue Planet Foundation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Jody Robinson, Blue Planet Foundation, in strong support of this bill. Energy efficiency is the most cost-effective way that we can decrease our emissions associated with the electricity sector. This is a common sense measure to extend our portfolio standards from 2030 to 2045, and also save us millions of dollars on our electricity bills into the future. For these reasons, we ask that you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Caroline Carl, testifying on behalf of Hawaii Energy.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee, Caroline Carl with Hawaii Energy Efficiency Program. We stand on our written testimony and support, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Susan Lord for MJM Sales Hawaii in support, Arun Rivera, testifying for Wild Kids Hawaii in support, Lonnie Shin Sato, Hawaiian Electric in support, Chris Caulfield, Democratic Party of Hawaii in support, Paul Bernstein, HECA's Building Decarbonization Task Force in support, Sherri Pollock in support, Ted Boland, Climate Protectors in support, Virginia Tinscher, Citizens Climate Lobby Hawaii in support, Rocky Mode, Oi Solar Energy in support, Charlie Ice in support, and two, and nine other individuals, all in support. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, any questions?
Just, like, no. No, nobody, I guess, we can just, if anybody can answer, how far in the future? In the future, that's, I said, like, no, how far you think in the future that this is gonna benefit us in the saving costs?
The date is until 2045, it matches with our.
Can you come here, please?
Hi, Jody Robinson, Blue Planet Foundation. Senator, this bill would extend the energy efficiency portfolio standards from the date currently set in statute, which is, expires in 2030 to 2045, which is the date that we're targeting for some of our other renewable portfolio goals and the decarbonization goals.
No, no, just because I just heard that we was gonna save our energy costs in the future, I don't know if I'm gonna be in the future.
I hope so, Senator, me too.
Okay, go ahead, Bella.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Mickey Knox from the Consumer Advocates Office, I think I get your question, yes, there will be some initial investment, but the savings are immediate. As soon as you start using less, you're gonna get billed less.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Chair, appreciate it, guys.
I would think if you're using less, you're gonna be billed less.
Yeah.
Anyway, Energy Office, please.
Are you seeing, it's down, or is it still seeing the same?
So whether the bill passes or not, are we on track to meet the energy efficiency goals that have been set so far?
So far, yes. We are on track, and I think a lot of that has to do with the guidance of the bill, as well as the measures that we've taken in terms of energy savings performance contracts and benchmarking state buildings, and of course, the great work of Hawaii Energy and rebids.
So whether or not the bill is passed, we still on track?
On track so far. The target setting it out to 2045, you know, might keep us on track for that, but yes, certainly through 2030, we are on track.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, next up, HB 2103 relating to long-duration clean energy storage. First up, Hawaii State Energy Office, sorry, you back again?
Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer, we stand on our testimony and support.
Thank you. Next up, Charles Ice, Environmental Caucus, Democrat Party in support, Sherri Pollock individual, also in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Just for Energy Office.
Senator Favella.
I know earlier you said we're on track for getting into the area of being off of fossil fuel, but with all the bills and all the things that going around, we understand with this clean energy, but what did you think if we considered, again, I don't know what bill was that already, but we have the author of the bill here, on the wheeling with government buildings and having wheeling, wouldn't we hit our certain goals even quicker if we start using wheeling within the government and being the first ones to start using wheeling to lessen our costs, and then, that is also clean energy, because each building that has PV or clean energy mechanisms, wouldn't that help the move forward in being energy and clean, clean energy position?
Chair, Senator Favella, the Hawaii State Energy Office has testified this session in support of wheeling-type measures as a, as an efficient way to move energy throughout the system.
Yes.
Done appropriately, done carefully, and so, yes, it can, it can be beneficial. And I note that the community-based renewable energy programs or the shared solar programs are essentially a form of wheeling.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you, Chair, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, Mark, can you hang on, sorry. So, you know, KIUC, is there, is the project for KIUC the only renewable hydrogen project in the works?
Hydrogen?
Hydrogen.
Hydrogen. It's, in terms of power generation, I mean, we certainly have, Chair Decoy, we certainly have, on the transportation side, we do have some hydrogen projects and hydrogen fueling stations and electrolyzers in place, but in the electricity generation market, we have very limited, and I'm not familiar with KIUC's hydrogen.
So how close are we to reality versus potential for pump hydro projects?
Oh, pumped?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, when it comes to pumped hydro, that particular project at KIUC is an extremely important project, but it is being held up through some litigation, but we actually see the pumped hydro as a storage, as an extremely important way to, essentially what pumped hydro does is, you can store water in a reservoir, and then, when you need it, you can then flow it through, allow to dispense into a hydroelectric plant, and then it disperses into a lower reservoir, and then you use a pump to, using usually solar power during the day, pump it back up to the top of the reservoir, again, use it whenever you need it. So that form of energy, which is being proposed by Kauai Island Utility Cooperative as an important part, as a way that they intend to get from 60% to 80% renewable, is extremely important. I know that that is also being considered in, let's say, the Molokai, you know, Clean Energy Resilience Action Plan, where they wanna look at Koala Pooa Reservoir, and that is a very legitimate and seemingly appropriate place, and I think another reservoir even further up country, but would require a higher reservoir even than to bring the water down to it. So that's actually a very viable opportunity, but each one has to be economically analyzed just to determine, you know.
Yes, I was gonna ask you next, what would be the cost factor? Because I was looking at the, even like the KIUC ditch.
Yeah.
What would be the potential of during their rainy months to capture and then hydro?
So it depends, the cost depends a lot on whether the reservoirs exist already. If they don't exist, and you have to build them, and you also have to build the spillways and the piping, that can be very expensive, and it may not be cost-effective at the end of the day. The other thing is that there's a 30% power loss for moving the energy back up, you know, to the top of the reservoir, so in many cases, battery storage is cheaper, but again, depending on what it's displacing and what alternatives it may be better at, then, it may be better than continuing to use solar and batteries, the combined cost may end up being better, so it just really depends on the situation.
So maybe, so even if you were pumping it back up, you could still use the solar to pump back up as well?
That's correct.
As kind of renewable.
Yes, yeah, pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Senator Wakai.
You know, yesterday, we, the day before, we honored the military for their successful defueling of the Red Hill tanks, and there's been talk about turning those Red Hill tanks into a hydro facility. Trying to figure out, like, how or does this bill affect any possibility of making that transition?
Vice Chair Wakai, it does present the opportunity for us to look at all of those possibilities, and that's really what it's meant to do, where we do the investigation, determine what are the best fits. Very similar to what Chair Decoy was talking about, you know, what are the reservoir situations and the height, you have to have a sufficient height between the upper reservoir and the lower reservoir to get enough hydroelectric power, so there is certainly a reason why you would wanna explore Red Hill as a possibility, at least, you know, from an analytical standpoint, just to determine whether it's even feasible.
Yeah, I mean, maybe put in a lot of resources to fix the pumps, seal everything, make sure that they didn't drop outs of fuel into our facility, would be a shame for them to just walk away from that facility, when that thing is right now primed to be a hydro facility for this island.
Well, certainly, you know, having water in the system, you know, would have less degradation potential than obviously petroleum.
Thank you. Next up, HB 2372 relating to the solar energy storage loan program. First up, Gwen Yamamorolau, testifying for Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
Good afternoon, we also stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Next up, DBED, Mr. Tokioke in support, PUC Commission, Leo Asunchen.
Good afternoon, we also stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Munikata for Ulupono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair, we stand on our testimony and support.
Thank you. Ted Boland, Climate Protectors Hawaii in support, Sid Villaflor in support, Forrest Frizzle, Shifted Energy in support, Sherri Pollock in support, Ryan Hamilton, Conception in support, Rocky Mode in support, Charles Ice in support, Nicole Rodriguez in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, any questions from the committee, let's see. Gwen, can you come up, please? And everybody should be smiling like you.
Well, I don't know, I hope you don't make me cry.
No, that's not contagious, no. How many loans have you made to Alice's families, and what was the average amount of the loans?
Yeah, so we, so the, our families are typically larger, right? It, so it goes big and small, but on average, I say a system is about 50,000 sort of a storage. Right now, we've helped about 2,100 Alice households, this is both single family as well as in rental projects. Currently, we have almost 1,000, like 900 something, applications in process right now, and with an average of 50,000 dollars per system, that's about 47, 48 million dollars in investments that we're looking at deploying once we go through the processing. When we process, we approve it, we don't have any credit screens, because that's the whole reason we can be more inclusive. The qualification is they have to be low and moderate income, and then we have consumer protection measures in place so that we don't, we don't give the loan funds to the bar, we actually pay the contractor after they finish their milestone, meet their milestone installation.
So the bank, you guys give a guaranteed commitment to the household, and they take that to the bank, and then?
So we actually, we, they approve, they apply from us, we approve them, once it's approved and they sign the program documents, we send the contractor notice to proceed so that they know that they can go ahead and install the installation, yeah.
Thank you. This seems to be contagious. No, thank you, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to HB 2354 relating to Small Business Regulatory Review Board. First up, testifying on behalf of Small Business Regulatory Review Board, Mary Albitz on Zoom.
Not, sorry, not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, testifying for DBED, James Tokioke in support, Ted.
Good afternoon, Lord Caucus, DBED stands in support.
Oh, thank you, Lord. Next up, Ted Kefalas, Grassroots Institute for Hawaii in support, Chamber of Commerce for Hawaii in support, Glenn Kagamira in support, Janet Ashman in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, any questions? Okay, just one question for DBED, please, Lord. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So the board was established to review administrative rules that may impact small businesses.
Correct.
But giving this additional duty to the Board of Reviewing Proposed Legislation, wouldn't it do the same thing that private businesses does with these advocacy groups such as the Chamber of Commerce, Retail Merchants, NFIB Trade and Organizations, et cetera? And if yes, would this bill be needed?
Well, pretty much what, what it means is that if a small business comes to the Board specifically for a bill that they want the Board's support for, that the Board will review it and decide. They're not just looking at every small business bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No questions, okay. Moving on to HB 2563 relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. First up, Daniel Naohoe PE on behalf of HTA.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Daniel Naohoe PE of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, and we stand in our submitted amended testimony to support the intent of this measure, particularly because it does align with our goals of smart tourism, creating a comprehensive, user-friendly system that also supports destination management, making it more efficient and effective to communicate safety and educational messaging. Please note, we submitted one technical amendment to this measure that would allow Section 4 with our current administrative structure, there's one change there, and we also wanna highlight that it will take dedicated personnel in order to manage this project if it's put in the Hawaii Tourism Authority's purview.
Thank you. Next up, Department of Budget and Finance, Luis Salavaria with comments, Laura Thielin and Department of Parks and Rec in opposition, Stephen Courtney, Deputy Director, City and County, Department of Information Technology in opposition, Lisa Bishop, testifying for Friends of Hanama Bay in opposition, Angelina Bonet in support, Kathleen and Pahinui also in support, oh, I'm sorry, is Angelina here? Okay, no. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Yeah.
Senator Favella.
What, yeah, losing language, huh? Why does I give you this quick losing language? Internet. Listening to the opposition, I kinda know why, but a question for me would be, you know, what would be the estimated cost of hiring a third-party vendor to create a mobile app and a reservation fee for the city and the state communication activities?
So we have estimated, and also required ETS and such, it can be very broad in price, a low of 3 million in terms of initial costs, and another maybe 3 million in recurring costs, very similar to the in-flight survey type of digitization, that would also include support with a person, but it could be phased over time, it depends if we're gonna do it all in very quickly, within a short period of time, or phase it and develop it and working with various agencies over a longer period of time of five years or so.
Yes, I'm not really looking into the part, but it just, so, is the state gonna foot all the bill, or the city might have to chip in some, and that's the reason why we get opposition?
We're assuming that we would coordinate with their, we're not, the suggestion in this process is that to coordinate with the API or linking to the existing apps and existing programs, so the state version is just really kind of a platform.
Yeah.
Because in the end, really, from the HTA, we want the visitors and the residents who use the app to just go one place, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we can add on things from that point, but the opposition, we still haven't talked to all of the other agencies, but maybe they think that it's taking over and replacing, but no, we're just linking, it's just so that the user doesn't see and have to go all over the place and find things, it'll just be linked to our existing app as well.
The reason why I say that is because we, we need to do something like that, because we just getting people running, you know, all over our, our state, and we need to have some kind of, you know, control, yeah, and, you know, wanna take out, make sure we take out Mermaid Cave in Anakuli, because it's not a mermaid cave, but they're still going there anyway and getting hurt, so, yeah, that kind of stuff, we'd be able to regulate, right?
Correct.
As we go forward, which is great to let them know the risks, you know, pros and cons in enjoying our beautiful lifestyle that we have here, that we don't want nobody abusing them, so that's one way of kinda helping with all the agency entities to kinda, I don't use the word regulation, to, to, you know, keep an eye on.
Also, that allows the various apps to talk to each other, so say, for example, Hanama Bay is full right now, then the system that will be developed will identify, you know, nearby places that are, that actually have space, and then send them there to make the registration over their reservation.
So you thinking the initial investment in going forward would be beneficial for the, for the people, for us?
Of course, have you ever tried booking with your friends a couple different places over a week? It's very complex, about getting permits and registrations, and then finding out what's open, not open, so we really wanna look for very seamless, consumer-friendly.
If I cannot Google them, I cannot do them either. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Wakai.
Daniel, I'm so glad to see a bill like this moving you forward, but you really don't need a bill, HTA could just go ahead and do this without the language in this bill.
Actually, yes, within our statutes, if we have money and persons, to have the, and to dedicate the time to coordinate all of this, you know, we've been working on the in-flight form, takes a lot of coordination, different agencies to make this work.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've had this discussion with your predecessors years ago, and HTA was always resistant to going down this route, so I guess that's why Quinn had introduced this bill, to kind of force you guys to embrace technology, because as we think about, like, growing tourism, who are we growing tourism for? I mean, the largest beneficiaries of tourism these days are the hotels, all of which are owned by mainland corporations, and, you know, when you look at the way Expedia, Travelocity and OTAs operate, they take huge commissions out of this economy, right? They take 40% from attractions, you go to Dole, you go to Polynesian Cultural Center, Expedia takes 40% from that. You look at the hotels, they take 25%, so as we grow tourism, I think it's important for us to look at how we're gonna grow the local impact and not enrich the Expedia's and the OTAs of the world, so like this, because it begins to develop Hawaii, what I think we should do is have a Hawaii online travel agency to, like, combat the Expedia's and, like, keep all of that money here locally rather than those other areas, but going to the specifics of this bill, it only talks about, I think, permits, park reservation system, and you might know that we're trying to digitize that ridiculous paper egg form that we've been doing for 70 years and prosecuted nobody in 70 years, but it's still a valuable data gathering tool, can we put that in here as well that we, and as you was, we were mentioning to Senator Favella, I mean, it's all piecemeal all over the place.
Correct.
And I don't understand why the city doesn't wanna be a part of this, because to the, to the visitor coming here, they don't know if the Arizona Memorial is a federal park, state park, city park, we should have one, one place where, where you state park, city park. We should have one, one place where, where these people can seamlessly go to the Arizona Memorial, go to Diamond Head, go to Hanuma Bay, all of which are very different park systems, uh, with very jurisdictional issues and just make it easy and seamless for, for the visitor. So this is a good step, but it could be so much more comprehensive than we saw during COVID, uh, safe travels. We should put health issues, uh, on here, uh, as well. And, uh, so could we put that language in here that it will be more than just park permits and park reservation system that a visitor service?
Very supportive of that, particularly on those safety and educational messaging, which we've already doing in other media. But, um, coordinated with this app, of course, we have the content and we would attach it onto that.
Cause we're already talking to CNHA, um, Ito, I forget Ito's first name, it's CNHA.
Daniel.
Daniel Ito, yeah.
Yes, it's part of our contract with them in our, uh, smart tourism component. So they are starting to develop some plans and then this would definitely fit in to the range of identifying where the issues are and then applying an app to make the solution.
Okay, so CNHA is already, from what I understand, building the guts of something.
Planning, yeah, planning the, identifying what all the issues are and who to talk to and where the connections need to happen.
So from HTA's standpoint, do you really need, cause your testimony says you need an extra person to oversee this program?
Within, right now, we don't have anyone, uh, of a state employee assigned to that. And it's gonna, we, from past work with DMAPs, it takes a state employee to work with the agencies. They don't listen to contracted workers or come to the table and work collaboratively with us.
Right, but from what I understand, you're kind of in reorganization as to where the marketing part, where the branding part, where the management part is. So as you try to sift through how you're gonna recalibrate your, your lineup there, can you just have one person that's already, you already have a position there to be in charge of overseeing this rather than tell us you need an extra body when you're still trying to figure out how you're gonna be organized?
I think when you look at the complexity and the need for this smart tourism, it actually expands destination management, which this would sit squarely in. We're already asking for additional positions on each island to deal with on-island issues and working with the community. So we know we're shorthanded on being able to reach that. So adding this additional work and expanding it, the, at, the pace that this bill describes, if you wanna have it quickly and put in place because of all the issues of the various parks and visitors getting very confused right now, I think additional bodies are needed in order to implement this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, as a follow-up though, from, um, HTA's standpoint, if you're developing kind of like a common platform, I guess, to me, in a way, the city might be objecting because they think they will have to jettison all the work they previously put into their, you know, online permitting, et cetera. Wouldn't it be a matter of your platform then linking to and allowing for those features that are, uh, specific to county parks, et cetera, to remain accessible in that same platform?
Correct. The, the thought here and intent is that it, it's just a platform that talks to these other already existing, uh, reservation systems or any kind of other, uh, communication systems that the city or the state, other state agents have already put together.
So it becomes kind of like a, um, common, um, access point that people don't have to individually hunt for different, uh, social media sites or websites.
Correct. So right now, we have our Go Hawaii app, which is the, where we push all of visitors that come to Hawaii to utilize. And we could attach that, so it's just one place. And from there, there's a whole, but it's the whole backend that they don't see.
Right.
That takes all the work.
I think that would, that would gain you a lot of support from the counties because I think they would want to be part of a, you know, consolidated, um, platform. It's just that they're thinking, oh, you know, if you're gonna redo their entire, um, you know, however they set it up online, they may be fearful, but it sounds like your framework would actually benefit the counties.
And the bill also creates the fund for those, uh, parks or sites that do not have a fund right now to collect fees. It sets up a fund that then they can be collected there and then distributed to the agencies when, uh, the reservations are made.
Okay, well, we can perhaps reach out to some of the counties and, you know, show them that this is actually intended to help them. And so it's not to displace the work that has actually, has previously been done, but to encompass the thought of, oh, thank you.
Thank you. So, so Daniel, maybe you can share with the committee. Um, I think when we looked at Haina, Waianapanaapa, you know, as we went through COVID, we then also, I think, entertained the idea of also adding on the businesses to the sites. Um, you know, going down the road so that these, uh, businesses that didn't have the capital to build could literally be latched on as a, also a storefront driver within, um, the application itself.
So a lot of the discussions of our Destination Management Action Plans, when we talk about, um, diverting the demand, so you know, the, what, if a park is busy and we wanna divert, it may not only be a park, it could be another attraction, particularly, you know, a museum, nonprofit that have, that can access, or businesses take time for lunch or something like that. And that was in the discussions with the community wanted to see.
Um, so go- going forward and I, I know like, uh, when we took a look at Waianapanaapa, Waianapanaapa, which is on the east side of Maui, makes about three, three-point-something million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was probably one of the most busiest areas. But, you know, the QR codes had helped a lot of the suppression or the diversion of tourism. Um, adding on to that, is there anything in the works in the form of the messaging? Because when you, when the messaging came out for, um, Lahaina, Makauka,
Mm-hmm.
I, I realized that the messaging was a messaging only in Hawaii. So how do you guys, if we use the same system, we push the messaging out? Who's included in that messaging? Is the hotels pumping that message out and moving to the scene with this, um, this bill?
So an example would be our Go Hawaii app, which we encourage people to download before they come to Hawaii. And at that point, they're already receiving information from us, um, our Malama campaigns or information about how to travel responsibly. It's already been received if they, you know, there's a trip planning and other types of, uh, activities and services that are available on that app. And so they're doing that from their homes. So they're prepared before they even come here. I think that's what you were mentioning, right? And then it's also, depending on the technology that we're using, it could be, um, geotagged. So when you decide to go to whatever, uh, site, we can have specific information about that site and the community around it, both safety as well as promotional and educational, cultural history of the area.
So, so take an individual like Senator Favella that tries to Google stuff. He's in the mainland or he's in a foreign country and he's looking at coming to Hawaii. How would he know to go to the Go Hawaii site?
So typically in our ads and in promotions, there's a call to action that tells, uh, potential visitors to visit gohawaii.com. On the gohawaii.com, there is, uh, additional, you know, sign up to go, uh, get the app. Um, and the app can, is, can be web-based or downloadable, depending. And so they're already in contact at that point. So we're always pushing it that way. All our messages, all our advertising, travel agents all know to do that. Uh, force them or push them towards or encourage use of the app as well as, or the website, either one.
So, so once he hits, um, I, I'll go to Hawaii, that you grab the link, uh, grab him and pull him to Go Hawaii?
Typically, we have, it's a link there at the end of our messaging or ads, it's at the bottom, gohawaii.com. Or it has a QR code maybe for the app as well.
Okay.
Depending which ones we're using.
Sounds good. Uh, Senator Waka.
For that issue, you just pay for a search engine to like put you at the top.
Oh, yeah, that too. We do.
At a certain point, when you become Expedia, we all want, well, no, then you pull off of that cause everybody knows to go, to Go Hawaii. Uh, one more thing I wanted to just bring up is that, uh, as best you can, I hope that as you go down this road, you use a local technology company. I thought it was a huge mistake for ETS to go and put the state park reservation system in the hands of a Texas-based company. I mean, this is not rocket science. There's lots of local companies that can build out this app in the future. And I, you know, if we talk about diversifying our economy, we should be putting taxpayer dollars into local technology companies versus, as we did with the park reservation system, give it to some mainland company. We gotta invest in our own people. So just maybe in the committee report, as best you can, uh, as you build this thing up, have a press, uh, uh, favor towards a local company building this up versus a mainland or foreign company to.
We have the same values. That's our whole support of regenerative, right? Keeping the cycling and making sure money supports the communities that are here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, we will research for decision-making. We're ready for decision-making on our 1:01 PM agenda. First bill on the agenda is HB one, eight, two, eight relating to Energy Efficiency Portfolio Standards. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one defecting of date to January first, 2060. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Waka for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim, excuse, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, HB two, one, zero, three relating to Long-Duration Clean Energy Storage. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one defecting the date to January first, 2060. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Waka for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim, excuse, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill is HB two, three, seven, two relating to Solar Energy Storage Loan Program. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one, making technical amendments needed for clarity and consistency and defecting the date to January first, 2060. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Waka for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim, excuse, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, HB two, three, five, four relating to Small Business Regulatory Review Board. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one, making technical amendments needed for clarity and consistency and defecting the date to January first, 2060. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Waka for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim, excuse, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. And our last bill is HB two, five, six, three, HD two, HD D two relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one, taking the suggested amendment from HTA, section four, page seven, lines fourteen to fifteen, removing the Board of Directors, the Board of Directors of, and in the committee report, uh, adding, uh, using local companies, uh, also the, um, ag farm and health restrictions on travel to the state of Hawaii. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Waka for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim, excuse, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Aloha and welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development and Tourism and Committee on Agriculture and Environment, 1:30 PM agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March nineteenth, 2024 industrial room, 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature website. Please note, we have a two-minute time limit. Okay, first bill up and only bill up, HB one, nine, seven, two relating to electric vehicle batteries. First testify our, uh, State Office of Energy.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Maria Tome with the Hawaii State Energy Office. We will stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, testifying on behalf of Department of Health. In support.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. My name is Noah Klein. I'm with the Department of Health Solid and Hazardous Waste Branch. The department supports HB nineteen, seventy-two, HD one and will stand on our written testimony. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jennifer, Jennifer Navara, Hawaii Environment, Environment to Change Agent, Solid Waste Reduction Task Force on Zoom.
Hi, uh, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. We stand in strong support of this measure. Um, as you may know, like, batteries complain, contain very important minerals that are critical raw materials and often found in very few places in the world. So it is important that we find measures to recycle, uh, batteries, especially EV batteries as they become more, um, used to transition to more renewable energy sources. It's also important to keep these batteries out of the landfill as they, um, you know, also have those heavy medical metals that can be, um, hazardous to the environment and human health. Uh, I just would offer, uh, two amendments to the bill. Currently, the members of the working group are, are very heavily skewed towards industry, which I understand the necessary necessity of having them as, uh, a part of the discussion. But I would just, uh, respectfully ask to increase the number of environmental organizations to two from one and also to include members of the departments that manage recycling programs within each counties, particularly the outer islands in the working group as we have different considerations in the outer islands that aren't often considered when developing these types of programs. So it's important to, to bring those voices of the counties to this process. Uh, thank you for hearing this bill and hearing my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Zodos, Redwood Materials in support on Zoom.
Good evening, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. My name's Daniel Zodos. I work for a company called Redwood Materials based out of northern Nevada. We are testifying in strong support, um, of HB one, nine, seven, two, HD one as well. I did just wanna chime in with you this afternoon in terms of the merits of the legislation as well as Redwood's experience. We're one of the largest lithium-ion battery recyclers in North America. We have, um, quite a bit of experience in terms of end-of-life management of lithium-ion batteries as well as electric vehicle batteries. We have done extensive work on island in terms of the Maui wildfire response and battery energy storage sustainability and recycling at end-of-life. We have offered up in written testimony just a housekeeping language amendment that would actually add a member of the working group with a specialized expertise in electric vehicle batteries. From our experience, um, and a lot of the work we do with consumer electronics and end-of-life consumer devices, we just think it would be important to also have the voice of a more specialized recycler focused on larger format batteries and the nuances that really do come, um, with dealing with those larger batteries as well. So very supportive of this measure. We've been involved across numerous other states as well as California's leading work with a working group as well. Happy to answer any questions, um, but I, I do just wanna, to reference, we have provided some suggested language, um, within our written testimony. Um, and I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Ted Bowlin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition Protectors in support. Uh, testifying with Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association in support. Thank you. Uh, Charles Ice, Environmental Caucus, Democrat Party in support. Tony Bil- Bilot for Radius Recycling.
Hello, Hassan.
Hi.
My name is Melissa Pavlasek and I'm here today on behalf of Radius Recycling, which is formerly known as Snitzer Steel. We operate a metals recycling, um, facility on, uh, west Oahu and on Maui. And I don't think I've ever had the pleasure of testifying on a working group where so many people wanted to join it, but we ask that you consider adding somebody with automotive recycling experience. Um, we think this would provide some insight that would be necessary for the group to do its job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Tiffany Yajima for Alliance for Automotive Innovation.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Tiffany Yajima, on behalf of the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. The automobile manufacturers support the intent of this measure. The manufacturers, I do note, um, have a system in place already for EV battery management and recycling when a battery is truly at the end of its life. But we are happy to support this working group and, um, we'll be ready and willing to serve as a member of the working group. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Anaya Hazen with comments. Anybody else wishing to testify on this? Anybody else who should testify on this measure? Seeing none, any questions? Senator Wakai.
Maria. Yeah, I see, I see the necessity for this bill and the working group, but it only focuses on EV batteries. I mean, I was just at the KES opening two days ago. I mean, we put 185 megawatts of batteries to fortify our grid. Would it be prudent to look at all batteries rather than just looking at EV batteries?
I believe so, yes.
So could we expand? Then we expanded, then all of the people who want in on the EVs, then I don't know who the players are in the, you know, the grid battery world. I imagine that they would want in. Seems like we're going to eventually have to deal with that issue as well with the kind of, I don't know what you call those grid, grid batteries.
And we could, you know, it could be that the lessons learned and the information gathered through this effort are also applicable to others as well. And so it could be expanded at a later point. As one way to acknowledge that, you know, if we come across information relating to others, that is also part of the understanding. But perhaps, you know, the scope can be this with also acknowledgement of other valuable information or, or future efforts that would need to be pursued. You know, once you get the folks together answering some questions, then inevitably other questions come up that can be looked at later.
So do you think, in your opinion, it's prudent to just start off small with the intent to grow bigger? Or should we just tackle these two problems at the get go?
We, you know, as you mentioned, the size of the working group is something to consider. So, you know, generally, if we can keep the size of the working group 20 or so, between 14 and 20, I think you have an effective group. Once it gets too big, it does become very unwieldy. So I would say maybe start with this and grow as necessary. You know, that would be part of the recommendations perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Richards.
Yeah, thank you. Do we still have Daniel Zotos on the line?
Yes, you do, sir.
Yeah, thank you. You say you're one of the, or you work with one of the largest battery recycling. What is the recovery rate for these ion batteries for the rare earth metals?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Redwood's, I can't speak for other companies in this space, but Redwood's focus, we've had numerous reviews and studies of our processes. Most recently, Argon National Labs reviewed our process. We have a, over a 95% material recovery rate for lithium ion batteries. We employ a number of processes in terms of actually reclaiming metals, relying heavily on a hydro metallurgical process and calcination. Could definitely have folks smarter than myself get into more details on what the science of all that looks like. But all in all, there actually is a really great story to tell here domestically in terms of our ability to reclaim materials from spent batteries. And that's something Redwood is entirely focused on, not just to, not just to keep them out of landfills, but also use those materials for future production of battery components.
Okay, and then springboarding off of Senator Wakai. Do you do the, the grid size recycling? Have you done that?
Yeah, so I actually raised my hand. I was going to comment, we, we didn't have an opinion one way or another in terms of whether this working group should address this problem. That being said, Redwood actually has pretty unique experience, particularly with Hawaii. We decommissioned in, in partnership with Kauai Island Utility Cooperative, one of the first and largest stationary storage systems in North America. Just a few months ago, we actually decommissioned one of their substations. Were able to get those materials off island for recycling in our facility in the mainland. So we do have quite, you know, an initial expertise in terms of battery energy storage, grid scale, utility storage, as we'd put it. I would say it's still early innings in terms of what that looks like. And it would be well placed to consider and think about that, you know, in terms of what this working group may be tasked with. I, I share similar comments from other folks who have testified this evening. I think, you know, the size and scope of these working groups could get unwieldy. But I would say it's early innings. Redwood has a lot of experience, particularly on island in terms of dealing with those sorts of systems at end of life as well.
Okay, thank you. And Chair, what more to say for Tiffany? Thank you, Mr. Zotos. Hi. So what is your plan or what is the industry doing with recycling EV right now?
Sure. So right now, so EV batteries have multiple uses. So first, under, in sort of the hierarchy of recycling, first we would seek to have, like when a battery starts to fail, you would first want to reuse that battery, refurbish it. So as part of the car manufacturer's warranty, it would go back to the dealer. And under that warranty, it would be, the parts that are being worn would be replaced. And that battery would be put back into the vehicle. As sort of a second step, when that battery is no longer viable for use in a car, it could be used in the secondary market. For example, if you could aggregate all the batteries and then use that as a backup for other systems. And then when a battery is truly at the end of its life and it can no longer be used, that's when the recyclers would take it apart. Or the car manufacturer would actually take that back. And it's pretty unprecedented, unprecedented. And in California, what they're doing right now is taking the whole car back, including the EV battery.
Okay, and I get, from what I was hearing, you're describing theoretical what could happen. But what is actually happening with our EV here in Hawaii? Not industry, but Hawaii specific.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a bit premature. Right now in Hawaii, there aren't very many vehicles, I mean, that are being taken back under that scenario. So I do think that a working group would be a good idea so that we can do some fact finding.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Energy Office, please. So through your guys' office, how, and who are you guys working with? If the batteries disposed today, how are the batteries disposed today? How are the batteries of today recycled?
Yeah. So we have been talking to the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute. They performed a study on this a couple of years ago. And then they had a follow up report on that as well. So they have been looking into this and there's a lot of information in that and we can share that, that with you.
So in regards to the speaker on Zoom, I know that he does.
Radius, yeah, yeah.
Have you guys had conversation with that individual?
Yes, with that company.
So you guys picked the individual or you guys look at different amount of individuals?
No, we're just looking at who's doing, who's doing what. You know, and so in the state of Hawaii, there's a lot going on. But until we actually have this working group, we, we're just, you know, picking up information as we go. You know, we, we requested, we had a request for interest to pursue a grant. And so, you know, but it's really kind of, you know, as somebody mentioned, it is under development.
So part of you guys' fact finding within the group would be to also consider if there is anybody here
Oh, yes, definitely.
That is capable of recycling.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Because there's a lot being done in the solar industry as well.
Okay. So should the state's role in the disposal recycling of electric batteries be only regulatory? And if yes, what regulations do we currently have on the books?
Well, that would be part of this, you know, Department of Health, of course, and the city and county as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Senator Wakai.
Sorry, wasn't aware of HNEI's study on this very issue. So if they already have recommendations, why are we doing a task force?
Their, their study looked at clean energy materials and they started off with photovoltaics piece, right? Yeah, so, but definitely there is a lot of development that's been, that goes on in this area. So to get the actual folks who are doing stuff together to work on this working group together, I think would be very helpful. And of course, we would include the folks that the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute has been working with because they have been doing very valuable work and have a lot of good information to share.
So you see that this group would, based on the HNEI report, start executing on whatever the recommendations were?
Well, we'd see, yeah, we'd see what, what can be done now. And there's some stuff that, of course, needs to, needs to get started soon. So we would, that's why we are very supportive of this.
Oh, no, Senator Akai.
I hear about recycling all the batteries and all of that. Most of these PV panels not going to be, you know, I know it's in the bill, but I'm just saying, what are we going to do with the PVs? If the PV is going to run out and be old before these batteries. So here we are, we're here with the batteries and the batteries that we are going to be trying to be perfect. But obviously not until then, we're going to, how we're going to do with the PVs. We're going to use a full RAF, you know, anyway.
You can't if you tickle the insides.
Yeah. Because isn't, isn't that, I mean, isn't that part of us recycling too, you know what I mean? So I just wanted, because I see that, I don't want to say that, but it's like we're putting the cart before the horse because battery is not expiring anytime soon, but the PV is going to expire before the batteries.
And I do know that there are PV recycling efforts that the solar industry has going on.
Over here, hopefully?
Yeah, yeah.
Please let me know so I can go see where they should put them. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our research for decision making. Ready to decision make on our 1:30 PM joint agenda. HB 1972 HD1 relating to electric vehicle batteries. Recommendation is to pass as an SD1 amending Section 2D by adding a representative from the automotive recycling industry into the working group and defecting the date to January 1st, 2060. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Akai for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim's excused, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Same, same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoy.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwah is excused. Chair, you have four in favor.
Thank you, ma'am.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.